This November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Education Study Session to Order. Roll call, please.
Kate Thomas.
Here.
Troy is not here. Deb Baker.
Here.
Jim Hansen. Clay, we don't have Jamie's coming and Michael.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, every vote on this is gonna have to be roll call, so I need an approval or motion for the approval of the agenda.
All moved.
I make a motion.
You second, okay?
Kate.
Um, yes.
Deb. Yes, Jim.
Yes.
And Michael.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, on to number three items for discussion, the Associated School Board, South Dakota Legislative Platforms. I got it. We all got the tally from Shirley, and it looks like the majority agreed with everything. So there were just a few um, that I want, that I had questions about that didn't really, I didn't even mark it because I didn't know. I think we could start with um, number six and seven, which is um, A, six and seven, which starts on page twenty-eight.
Was it five and six? Well, there was five and six, or five and seven, not six.
Oh, was it?
I think so.
I have it written down that six and seven contradict. And I wanted to get maybe some clarification from Wade, but maybe it's just something that at when, when I go to it, this meeting, I can get the clarification there beforehand, but um, what was the school boards across? Do you remember Deb, what that contradiction was that we?
I think we were just gonna talk to him, needed to talk to him about it. This is the state test. Are you talking about five?
It's the no, six and seven.
Five is circled as well, Kate.
Yeah, um, five had four agree and three disagree. Three disagree. Yeah, you're right. I should start with that one. Let's do that one. Five state testing requirements. Beyond what is already required by state law, they are their rationale for saying that they oppose legislation that would exempt any student in public, private, or homeschool from the state assessments. So the rationale is that they believe all students should be included in the testing. All groups of students, whether public or private or homeschool should be required to demonstrate knowledge at a similar level to their peers. Uh, and I know that I disagreed only because the state assessments, I don't know how you can make private or other. I don't know by law that you can make a private student, you know, at St. Thomas More or Rapid City Christian.
I think one of the reasons they're saying this, Kate, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Uh huh. So I think one of the reasons they're saying this is because if if a motion is made for money to follow the student.
Right.
There's going to have to be some accountability of some kind. So then, like, private schools, homeschool people that would want to take the money would need to take the assessment to prove that instruction was happening. Um, I know that, I know that one of the oppositions to there being this formerly was that um, it wasn't necessarily being used after the kids took the tests. Nothing was being necessarily done with that data. So it wa- it was kind of a waste of expenses is kind of what the Family Heritage Association had said when they when we pulled kind of all the hoops back from alternative instruction, because when the test was being given and assessed, nothing was being done with that. But I think they're bringing, I think ASBU, um, the school board are bringing it back because of the, the worry that if funding starts to follow the student, that will be an issue. And Koi um, can step in on this if he has anything to add, but I was talking to Christie about homeschool numbers. And that we have over two thousand, over two thousand local students have signed up for alternative instruction, and that would be over ten million dollars that we don't have, which in and of itself, we, we've always known we've had students in homeschool or alternative instruction, but since two thousand and seventeen, we have gone from seven hundred and eighty-three. We had about fourteen hundred in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty, two thousand and twen- twenty-one. And now we are over, well, over two thousand. Christie didn't give me an exact number, but well over two thousand. And, and I know a lot, a lot has changed, but okay, I think a concern is that from a public school point, public schools are losing significant money to that.
Right, and I, I would like to not focus just on homeschooling, but the wording is private.
Yeah.
Et 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 cetera. I don't know how we can require pub, um, private schools, let alone homeschoolers by law to, in fact, the law actually states that public schools are required to give the test, but any public student can actually get exempt from it. All they have to do is sign a form. So so could the homeschool, I mean, by law, they aren't required to take it. You're just, the public schools are required to give it. And if they do take it, the other part of the law says you must give the report or the data back to the parents or guardians. So I guess what I'm saying is the rationale, I understand if something is proposed where the money follows the child.
We have bad connections.
Can a private, right now, a private student or an alternative instruction student take? Ask, I mean, because I know that they can go to the public schools and say, at least with alternative instruction, let's say they've got a sixth grader and they come to the schools and they say, we would like to borrow the public's sixth grade material. I know that they could do that. Could they even ask for the assessment to be right now? Uh, that I'm not sure about.
Where some of the confusion is. I also do think that they should take homeschool out of this. They should change the verbiage to be alternative instruction.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That, they've got change to be made, but um, uh, you know, I think if, if a public, or sorry, if a private school takes state or federal funds, then testing might be required. Um, I don't know that, that might be a Jackie question. Um, if they take, if our private schools in the community take our curriculum and take our, their share of our federal programs money for non-pub, if they have any requirement to do the testing, I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry. Um, but that would be an interesting. If it's attached to money, then that might be an expectation. Um, here's the deal, though, Deb, and, I'm sorry, here's the deal, though, President Thomas. Um, if a form is signed and a, and a family opts out of state testing, the stool, school still gets the ding. If we don't test a certain percentage of our kids, we take a hit.
Five percent, right?
Yeah, and that includes families that opt out.
I'll, I'll get to you, Jim, here in a second. And Michael, um, I just want to point out, so they're opposing legislation that would exempt any student. Any student, except there's always room for exemption. So this is almost like I, I don't, I mean, they can, they can oppose legislation that would exempt, but they already are exempt. If anybody wants to be exempt, they can be. So it's, it's, they aren't, there is no law that says they have to. So I don't know how they would propose, why propose any legislator that proposes to exempt that would be null and void because they already can exempt. So go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. First off, the state can control that because they're the ones that make sure that the um, diplomas are handed out. They're the ones that make it. So yes, they can, and that's no big deal. Well, because here's the thing, at the end of the day, don't you want every South Dakota kid in any form of education to graduate? Do you not want them to meet the requirements? Look at the issues we have with math and kids going right down the street to, to South Dakota School of Mines. They have to take in some class, some areas, additional schooling before they can take that. So why wouldn't we want them to take it? Why wouldn't we want every single eligible student to that is in the state of South Dakota, not just public? Why wouldn't we want them to take it? There's already a punishment if you don't take it with what superintendent Swiger just said. So here's the thing. At the end of the day, this issue is all kids in alternative schools, ninety-nine percent of them can pass those due to their instruction. Homeschoolers, ninety percent of the kids can pass those due to their instructions at their home. They're awesome. It's the ten percent that skips school so much that the parents come in and they fill out those forms and there's no tie to make those kids go and get an education. So if we make these mandatory, then guess what? The person who's trying to avoid truancies by hooking up with homeschool, that's, that's the fallacy. That, that shouldn't happen because what we need is all eligible juveniles to pass and to graduate and to move forward in whatever area there. I'm not arguing where they are. I'm just saying, I actually agree with the state that there should be mandatory testing. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Um, I do think that there's, it's two different issues because they're, they're just saying that they oppose legislation that would exempt public, private, or homeschool from state assess- assessments. That's what they're proposing. That they would oppose legislation for exemptions. And I'm just saying, they, they
Well, when you're
You can't, you, you can exempt yourself. I mean, any parent can exempt anyone.
Well, then, then every school gets dinged for it. So why, why are they allowed to exempt? So the key here is, is we want them tested. So that, because right now we're in a money crunch, and if, if we have to to get the money, we need to do this. But these are questions you need to ask when you're at the, at the
Right, and I definitely will. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Michael.
Um, the thing I was just gonna add is that very first don't judge my English here, Mrs. Swiger clause, phrase, um, beyond what is required and already required in state and federal law. So they're saying what you're talking about will not change. We're good with that. Um, but opposes any further. So if the legislature, legislator does come and bring something like Mrs. Swiger was talking about, that says private schools that receive federal funds are exempt, then that is something, that's the way I'm reading this at least, and that is something that would be, that would be opposing. Like Mr. Hanson was saying, I, I agree with. If you're gonna take money, especially, you should be held to those same standards that, that anybody else. So I, I think there is definitely some differences there, right? The stuff we're doing right now, which I agree, anyone can exempt their student from, I don't necessarily think that you should because of all of those reasons that were mentioned, but you can. That's not changing. That's the beyond what is already required. This is just saying if anything else comes up, that we're, we're good now, basically, is what it's saying. We don't need to change it one way or the other. And I, I agree with that.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Speaker's off. Her, she's muted.
Okay, yep. Oh, there she is. Um, and it kind of just sort of bounced off of what Michael said, um, but I don't think like so it's saying legis, like the legislation itself would be saying the these people are exempt. It would be legislation that would be specified, like that's how I read it, not it's saying, oh, no one can individually exempt. It would be legislation saying these students, this school, this institution is exempt. It's what, is what it would be opposing, not saying that we're trying to take away the right of an individual parent. So I think that's true. I just think we need to like clarify that, that's more saying specific legislation using the terms exemption and it's specific groups that would be exempt.
Right. Uh, I, I, sorry, I would go on to say that this is the thing that, if it put in place would prevent the money from following the child without testing. So that would be an additional exemption. So students, nobody could say we are going to let the money follow the child and nobody can force those people to take tests. That would be a beyond what is already in place type thing.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? Okay. Um, let's go to six and seven then.
Six shows everybody agrees.
Yeah, but my, I guess, no, okay, let's go to seven, and then I think that's where I'll find why I think that six and seven contradict each other. Okay, the resolution on number seven, page twenty-nine. Associated School Board supports changes to the statute, a state statute governing content standards revision cycle that standards only be reviewed and revised at the request of the State Board of Education Standards. And this is a proposed adoption. This isn't something they've had before. Um, and the rationale would be, uh, that the Board of Education Standards is best suited to decide what, which content standards need to be reviewed, um, and that they make the determination, uh, which content standards should be reviewed and when they should be taking place. If this is a new proposal, do they not already do that? Or is this saying each district can come up with their own standards? I mean, can we at this point come up with our own standards? I thought it was always the Board of Education. So if this is a proposed adoption about who gets to pick the standards, um, that, I guess that was what my question was. Um, go ahead, Nicole, I, I, or Michael, I think yours was up first.
After she raised her hand, I almost put mine down, um, because she probably knows more than I do. But from my understanding, right now, um, they're on a cycle and they just get reviewed whenever that time is up and pretty much anyone, not anyone, but there's a lot of different people that could propose that. I think what this is mostly saying is a legislator should not be the one saying that we need to review our standards. It should be the Board of Education. Um, staying, saying that sort of thing. So from my understanding, right now, they just kind of happen. Like, math is up this year, and so they do math rather than the Board of Education saying math needs to be reviewed, so we should review math. Um, so like, maybe we might go, I, I don't know what the number is. I'm gonna make up numbers. Five, every five years, math happens, and this would allow the Board of Education to say, nah, math's good, we can go seven years, or math is not good, we need to do that sooner. That's my understanding.
Go ahead, Nicole. So I think this allows, um, the Board of Education, like Michael was saying, to say when something is, is in need instead of being other people deciding that we need new standards. Um, for instance, when we went to math statewide, that, that students were not able to, you know, successfully pass the, the, the test, then maybe the Board of Education could have brought that up sooner and said, maybe we need to relook at these standards instead of being locked into a cycle. Or um, the Board of Education being able to skip revisions when they might really be needed if, if people were allowed to comment to them and talk about it.
So real quick, uh, before I go to you, Jamie, um, like last night, I asked the question, why, why do we do K through twelve right now? And it's because of the testing. We knew, we decided, we had our experts decide it's time to change it. Now, that doesn't mean that the standards changed. So the standards are still there. Is this a proposal, then? Not necessarily for curriculum change, but the Board of Education is the only one that can change um, the standards?
Let's say, for instance, that social studies had not been up for revision. If we, if that wasn't on the cycle and they were not for revision, this would say that only the State Board of Education could bring social studies up to have the standards revised and go through that process. Only the Board of Education. It wouldn't be the Governor's Office or the Department of Education. It's gonna, that, this authority is gonna lie solely with the Board of Education, which I think maybe the hopes is to take politics out of it a little bit.
So you're talking about our Board of Education, right?
No, state, no, the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education. So this is developing statewide standards. So right now, our closest connection to that is what's happening with the social studies standards and what's happening with the CTE standards. That's the, that whole process um, could only be instigated by the Board of Education, and they would have some kind of a timeline to do that work. But if things were rolling along great, they could, they could say, no, we're not gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of state money to do, to fix something that's not broken, or they could say, hey, this is broken and we need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of state money to fix this. But it would be the Board of Education who are put in place to make that choice instead of it being something that's kind of up for grabs.
So basically, this is a proposal so that some, someone like Governor Noem could not come in and put her own standards on there. I mean, I don't know why we couldn't have our own experts, if, you know, I I don't think that legislators, unless they've been in the teaching world, et cetera, um, would necessarily know what standards need to be there. However, why couldn't we have our own experts within our departments say, be able to propose new content standards depending on our own testing?
We could, this is saying we, we'd know where to propose it to. Right now, it's confusing. Do we propose it to the office? Do we propose it to the Department of Ed? Do we propose it to the state legislature? This would clarify that. You would propose it to the Board of Education, the State Board of Education, and they would make the call. And right now, it's messy.
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
You're, you're on mute. Mute again.
Sorry, I should probably wait for Nicole to talk before I raise my hand anyway, but, um, but yeah, I, I read that as very much like a, a little bit of trying to take, to keep to keep the standards and the cycle and timing determined by who we, who we would call experts so that we're not having, like I said, political input, like, oh, because you could have crazy swings, like certain people get elected and want to try to do this, and certain people want it, like, you don't want that for state standards. You don't want it to be, oh, this person comes in and wants to change it, and this person comes in. And so, um, if it has to be done through the state board, that puts a little bit of a control on that. And so that's, that's how I read it, is just saying, this is staying with educational experts, and that's who should be captaining the ship. So I, I didn't answer on this one, um, who, who disagree, there was one disagreement. I did, I think it's because I misread it, actually. Like, now, it makes more sense. Okay, okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Um, I was just gonna say one more thing, and this kind of relates to, I think, what might be some of the confusion with six as well, which is curriculum versus standards. Um, so the curriculum as number six says, we, this Board of Education decides.
That's what, that's what I was talking about.
That's what we're teaching, how we're teaching it. That's like the math stuff last night, our textbooks, those sorts of things. So that's where we would say something like we see our kids are really struggling with fractions. So here in Rapid City, we're gonna do more with fractions. The content standards is what everyone is expected to know. That's what's on quote unquote the test. Um, so that's why that's decided by the state level Board of Education. That's things like every kid needs to be able to add fractions and multiply fractions and do those sorts of things. So those are standards are kind of your goal. Curriculum is more of how you get there. So we, we decide how you get there. The state is deciding what we're trying to get to.
Okay.
With input from us, of course.
Right. Okay, I think we can move on, right? Okay. Um, local governance B. Number four. Why did I have this one circled? Um, I think I might have been the only one that disagreed with it. Yeah, there was only one. Public funding for non-public education. Um, I guess I had a question and I wanted input from all of you. So Associated School Board opposes any law savings account or voucher program. Uh, I think that's what we're gonna be seeing, something that looks like that, that diverts public dollars to non-public education. Um, how do we know it diverts it? Because
This is the money following the child.
Right.
This is.
But if you already have these people that are at public or private schools or alternative, um,
They don't get money right now.
Right. So it's not like we've got a pot of money sitting there for public schools. So if, I, I, I mean, where would it come from then?
So the pot of money for all education is this big, right?
Right.
So right now, we only take public education out of the pot of money. That's it.
Yeah.
If we now add all of the private and alternative students into that, the pot does not change. But the number of students withdrawing from that pot gets bigger, so everybody's piece of the pie gets much, much smaller.
Go ahead, Bishop Carr.
You're muted.
Okay, I, I thought my understanding, especially when you talk about voucher programs and you talk about um, money following the students, that you, the, a, a school district or gets a pot of money, and that represents, if you calculate it per kid, each kid gets a hundred dollars, right? So you get a hundred dollars per all the kids that you get. If that kid decides to go to a different education system outside of the school district, that hundred dollars then follows that kid, which then comes out of the public school budget. It walks with the, walks with the kid wherever that kid goes, and then is given to the education system that the, that the child is now in. So that, that was, that's my understanding of a voucher program, the money follows the, the child type. It, it's almost in reverse of of when we count, right? We get money for ten thousand, eleven thousand. So obviously, if you whittle that down, that's a number per child that we, that the state get, that, uh, the district That we, that the state get, that, uh, the district gets paid. And so again, with this voucher program, that money would come from us and go someplace else, which then dilutes. The money that the public school system has that we have to pay for the, the other students, so.
Deb, go ahead.
I'm just kinda confused because we don't get the money now. I mean, if, if, if somebody, if those kids aren't enrolled in our schools, we're not getting the money anyway. So I guess I'm kinda confused there. How does, how does that work?
So let's, let's say that, can I talk?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so let's say, right now in South Dakota, we have ten thousand, let's just say, ten thousand kids statewide. So, how much of the state money that's gonna go to education is divided by those ten thousand kids right now? Because we only count public school kids. But if we have to start counting all of the kids. That pot of money isn't gonna change, but now all of a sudden, we're gonna be taking fourteen thousand kids money out of that same pot. So what the district is going to get is a smaller slice of money. Because we're taking more. We're putting more withdrawals into the same pot of money. But Coy should really speak, because I might be not explaining it well.
Jamie, should I divert to Coy or would you like to?
Uh, go ahead and let Coy speak and I'll keep my hand up and.
Okay, go ahead, Coy.
Okay, thanks, President Thomas. So, yeah, I, I mean, I think, um. I think Nicole gives a, a good breakdown, um, of what the, in, in the. History of these conversations, what the general concern has been from districts, which is, I, I think backing up from. Um, the idea of what exactly happens within the district to more of a. Um, global idea of the pot is only this, right? The, the, the pot is X. And, um, if you, as, as Nicole used the analogy, well, if you. Start injecting more needs into the pot, then the pot dilutes. And so, um, I, I believe that the, the general concern across the state. Um, in the past, has been diluting the pot that ends up ultimately getting to, to the public schools. I, I think that, um, Bishop Carr makes some really excellent points. And I think that, um, in my opinion, one of the concerning things about, um, this type of language is. That we really don't know what the mechanism looks like for that, right? We, we don't know what that means and, and nobody has come forward with saying, okay, look. You know, there's gonna be a new revenue stream for, um, um, for this purpose and this is what it's gonna look like. So it won't dilute, um, ultimately what gets out to public education. Or, um, as Bishop Carr mentioned, um, this is what the mechanism is gonna be. That moves those funds from public school to whatever entity. And so, I think that's where a lot of that, that fear comes from, Kate. And so, excuse me, President Thomas. And so, um, I, I believe that those would be some, some good questions for, um, the ASBSD folks to say, what are you hearing? You know, and, and what does that mechanism look like, um, that, that you think could be coming? Um, to, to fund this and, and, and what it looks like. So, um, tho- those are my major thoughts, President Thomas.
Thank you. Um, go ahead, Jamie.
Um, I'll try to be really beefy. I, I think, um, explanation makes a lot of sense. I think, one of the things, if you actually look into research and historically, like. Um, and like I said, we don't know the mechanism, but when you look at like vouchers and money falls the child and like the, the success level. And the kids who actually have access to those alternatives, it, it's not kids that, like, because you still have to deal with. Um, transportation issues, you still have to deal with, so it doesn't actually like improve access. Because, great, I want my child to go to this private school in Custer. But if you aren't a family that has the ability to transport the moments of, so, so on its face, like, some of those things look good. But then when you look at them statistically, they don't actually come out, kind of like they sound. Um, but exactly like. Uh, Coy was saying and Bishop Carr, I think, so you talk about that, like, hundred dollars a child, what would happen would be, it would be. Yes, now the hundred dollars is seventy-five dollars. Because you added two hundred more kids. So it's like that per child, then I know it's like not truly that simple. But, um, but yes, so that per child amount would go down for every child, um, in public school. And so, and then, and eve- then even the amount that goes with the child wherever they go is actually gonna be smaller than. Um, than it would have been before. Um, and the other thing I think we have to consider, like, we talk about this and we don't know. But we still don't know if the grocery tax repeal happens. We have no idea. Like, I mean, we're talking about a major, and so now we're talking about a really, a smaller pot. That we're gonna be dividing by more. So I think we have to consider that when we think about this too.
Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have, putting on my math teacher hat here, um, for us and everyone watching. Just a example, like if we had a hundred dollars right now in our teacher pot. And I'm in public school, uh, Deb's in public school, um, Bishop Carr's in private school and Jamie's at homeschool. Right now, I get fifty, Deb gets fifty. Bishop Carr gets zero, Jamie gets zero. If we open that up and say, money follows a child, same for people. I get twenty-five dollars, Deb gets twenty-five dollars, Bishop Carr gets twenty-five dollars, Jamie gets twenty-five dollars. So even though we're not paying for them right now necessarily. That money's not growing. We still get a hundred dollars, or obviously way more than that, um, but we still get that hundred dollars that now we're just splitting up. In more ways. So, just the metaphor there, Deb. Maybe make some.
All right. So, um, just a quick statement, and you might be surprised, I would say ninety-nine percent of, um. Homeschooling groups would probably come out against this anyway, because they don't want to have to be accountable to the government. They will not take money from them. So, just so you know, I'm, if legislation is proposed. For that type of thing, they will want themselves excused from it. So, just interesting FYI. All right. Very quickly. No, he did from before, I think. Coy, did you have more?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. I should have taken my hand down. Apologies.
Yeah. Okay, um, number ten, we all agreed on, um, but I did wanna page, shoot, it's not on this. It's B, ten, safe schools resources. Um, I just wanna propose to them that we don't have language, it just doesn't. Uh, it, the, under the rationale, A, dedicate more resources to communities' efforts to. Quote unquote, wrap services around, quote, students. I just think that needs clarity and I don't think we should be, I, it was just one of those things that I'm like, that doesn't, it's not very well-written. Do you guys think so? Go ahead, Jamie.
And I'm gonna say, well-written. The only thing I'm presuming of is that they're pulling that from wraparound services. That they use in terminology with foster care. So I think if you, like, that's a very commonly used terminology and services. Within foster, so within the state, like, it would probably be more clear because in DSS and other things, that terminology is used. So I'm guessing that that's where that comes from.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Swiger.
President Thomas, it is also like with juvenile diversion, um, or JDAI, the alternatives to incarceration. What happened with a lot of that pot of money is. We're expected to do some services, but we're not getting any funding for it. So this is pushing back at the state to add funding behind what they're expecting us to do. Because right now, we've had to absorb that without any additional money.
Okay. Can we move on? Or Jamie, did you? Oh, you froze. Okay. We do have number twelve circled. There's one disagreement. Twelve would be school board and school bond elections. Um, does anybody, the, the disagreement, do, would, would you like to comment on why? Or given the opportunity, or is that clay? Was it clay? Okay, we'll move on.
Um, all right. Real quick, I had a question about it and then I reread it. So I don't think I was the disagree, but I think I was, I had marked it as a question. My question was just about, and I reread it and kinda like Jamie said earlier, was a different one. I read it and we still can have them on different days. I just was concerned. So, throwing that out there, we can still have them on different days, but I do support keeping it consistent, so.
Okay, so in number thirteen, we have two disagrees, um. Oh, yeah, governan- governance, they're taking out Co- uh, the pandemic part of COVID. Governance when dealing with, um, COVID, and they're leaving it that way. Um, at this point, if you're taking out my rationale for just getting rid of this altogether. Is that if you're, it's now no longer a pandemic. If they wanna keep it, it, COVID now goes into all communicable diseases, which we have policies for as well. Um, I just don't see any reason to have this at all. If we're, if we're removing that. Part, then we might as well add in flus, colds, whooping cough, RSV. You know, it becomes the same thing as the rest of them at this point. Um, so I would propose that we put in communicable sicknesses or diseases. That, you know. Or propose to get rid of it at all, because it doesn't make any sense at this point. Um, anybody have thoughts on that one?
You can let Jim go first.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
So. We can go into the weeds with every one of these, but remember, you're going to the ASAB where there's hundreds of people. And East River decides. So you can go there and you can propose all this and we can go into the weeds, but we don't have no say in this. We have a comment. Right. Big, in the bigger picture of this. The governor talks to them. The governor controls the Board of Education, all of these things. So, I love the enthusiasm, I love what we're here listening to. Just, just remember, we're really going into the weeds on stuff that the seven of us. Only have a small comment in the bigger wheel. Because you're going there to the hundreds that are on ASAB. So just, just remember that.
Thank you, Jim. Go ahead, Nicole.
So a hundred and fifty-one, if everybody shows up, but they won't, so it'll be less than a hundred and fifty-one, I would bet. I think that the reason they are electing to leave COVID in is in case. Federal government would decide to, to allocate any more money to states for COVID. Um, like our Esser or something, and I, so I think that in an effort to. Leave that door open at least a crack and not call it, you know, take away the pandemic, but leave it open a crack in case there's any money. That might be the rationale.
Okay. Um, Jamie?
Actually, I remembered on mute myself. Yeah, I just, I kind of agree with Kate. I think like, I don't necessarily think getting rid of it. Um, altogether, um, just because I think it does like support local choice. Um, but I do agree, like, a kind of change in language as far as, because I think if there is a change in language, barring. Uh, Nicole's comment about possible funding, but, I mean, God forbid. There could be some other crazy disease that occurs ten years from now that is horribly communicable and, you know. And so if we use, uh, uh, if, if they used a little bit different terminology, it would leave room for that. Because, you know, nobody saw COVID coming ten years from now, we don't know what else. So I kinda do agree with maybe a different, you know, just a little bit different language.
I might just at least propose it, you know, and just say, a comment, you know, under it. And have the group, the room, the group of people consider that, at least maybe for next year as well, so. Um, okay, number fifteen, there were two disagrees and that is on page. Oh, I don't have the page number. Next page, I guess, um. State-operated website for notices or meeting information pose, posting. Which local governments could post any required notices or meeting information. On us, and the rationale is a statewide website replacing the current posting requirements in state law. Would provide a centrally located platform for local governments to post notices and meeting information, save public funds. Currently needed to pay for posting requirements, which we pay quite a bit, right, Shirley? Um, for the newspaper. Um, I think with this one. Uh, I disagreed with it, but as long as we, because you. I, I'm kinda reconsidering, if we are posting still and, um, online. What if online goes down? Then we have no requirement by law to post it in the, in any local newspaper. However, I know it would save us a lot of money. But now I'm reconsidering, because, uh, Shirley, tell me if I'm wrong, we have to put them all in books. Down in the library, right? So there's still some place in writing that they would be. It just wouldn't be right away. Do you do that like a year at a time?
I posted after every meeting when you and the necessary people have signed those, they go on the book. And then I probably have about two years to take down there again.
Okay, so it's definitely not right away, in writing.
In writing, it is, because the ones you sign are the, are the legal documents that are put in those books.
So, okay, so they are in writing within our office, just, right now, we're required by law. To put them in like, uh, uh, the journal.
Yes, so that has to be, that has to be within twenty-one days. They have to be published within twenty days of the meeting.
Gotcha. All right. So this is proposing that they just put them on, on a website, taking that law out. Right?
That's how I read it, but I'm not certain. Coy would be better with that.
Yes, that, whoops, sorry, uh, that is, I, I believe that that is accurate, President Thomas. And, um, that is certainly the way I read that as well.
Jamie, go ahead.
So my one quick thing, so I was a disagree, um, one of the things that's been very, um, particularly during COVID, that was, um, kind of a hot topic. Is, um, the issues with like cable and internet access in the state of South Dakota. And so I just kind of questioned like, okay, we're gonna make something only available on a website. There are a lot of South Dakotans who do not have like rapid Wi-Fi access. And so I just question that as an access issue. Um, I do totally understand like the money savings, which I. I think is, is important, but that was, uh, my hesitance is just the, the access issues too. Especially in our rural areas that may not be able to access that website at all.
Deb, go ahead.
Well, I think one of the things that we need to think about is, I think a lot of print newspapers are going under, they're not gonna be around forever. So we probably should have something else in place, because I don't think that those are gonna. I, I think that they're in trouble financially, a lot of them. And I think, how much, uh, Coy, how much do we pay a year for this? Service, it's quite a bit. I think it's probably close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's significant. Um, we had, sorry about that, guys.
Oh, you're good.
We fell down. Um, we had a, uh, I had just done an analysis of that. And it, it, it was a really interesting history, because it ranged from, um, very high and then, and then curved way down and then got high again. But, you, you know, on average, I wanna say it was in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars a year over the last fifteen to twenty years. So, it is not an in insignificant amount of money, uh, for a district, our size, our complexity. Um, in the amount of things that we have to publish, for sure.
Michael?
Uh, I just wanted to add, um, there's nothing saying that you can't too. Um, so I think kind of to Deb's point a little bit, especially in those smaller areas, I, I can imagine. Like, for us, it's probably not a huge dip. We have the journal, the journal's probably gonna be here for at least a while. But those smaller areas, I can see where this might be an issue. So thinking of them as well. But the other thing I just wanna say is, I did agree, but if it's that website that we were using for a little bit last year. We need to fix something there. So, I don't know if that's something that would be brought forth here, but that Quorum website or whatever, that was.
Oh, no, we left that thing.
Well, would this, would this be up to, uh? Well, would this, would this be up to um, ASB? No, it'd be up to the state.
Right, so.
Okay.
So whatever the website is, make sure.
Do we agree or disagree on this?
I would agree, but.
I agree.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move on. I think I circled number six, just to have.
Hold on, we got sixteen still.
Oh. Oh, you're right. Sorry, school board policy referral. Oh.
My paper, but I don't.
Uh, yeah, it is. You're right. Um, I was thinking, I think I want a clarification and I can get it from them, I guess, that because we 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 all agreed on it. I just wondered about, is that um, opposes legislation permitting the referral of local school board policy? So if we make a policy, what they're saying is they oppose a group of people outside of, you know, your local, just community members, refer it to the law to be looked at, I think. When, I think the reason why associated school boards is saying we oppose that is that we are the policymakers, we are voted in. You vote in your policy basically, right? And so they're opposing anybody being able to take our policy to the state and have it referred for clarification or denial by the state, right? Yes. Okay, so yeah, that I just needed quick um, to make sure that was right. That's why I circled that. Okay. Number, I now I didn't circle six under school finance, but I have a note on mine. I was wondering if Koi could, so it's C six. Um, if you could comment, I was, my note says, could we invite? We might have to go and talk to, you know, like we've talked to about this before. Um, this is about the annual increase and I just think that the governor and the legislation do not have, they have this constitutional obligation. I just don't think they understand the um, the way it works and I would want them to be educated um, on how this works before they start making it worse. So if we could just, I'm just reiterating, I think we need to invite her here. Or if she has time, can we bring Koi and have him try to explain it to a group of them? So uh, number, yeah, go ahead, Koi.
I I was just gonna gonna very quickly comment, uh, President Thomas. I think the a- all that ASBSD is really trying to do with that is remove the the cap, so to speak, from um, the state aid formula and um, it, I'm sure in their mind, in anything they can do to, you know, remove barriers to the increase in the state aid formula um, is is where they want to be. And um, yeah, again, I I would just reiterate the idea that in in whatever form that looks like. And and I, you know, maybe we could even reach out to um, to Wade and and group at ASBSD to help facilitate some of that. But I do think it is super important to help our legislators, our governor and and whomever else is involved in these decisions to better understand that formula because it's complex and and it's difficult. And um, it's frustrating for them too to think about, well, I gave you a six percent increase last year, what did you do with it? And 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 that's very misleading. And so I think it would benefit everyone to have a a a better, clearer understanding.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Um, I had number eleven circled, but I, to to Jim's point, it's I was thinking we should add school resource officer slash sentinel officer, since it is within the law. But that we, you know, that any school district could get one, so, but it's it's weeds at this point, so we's, we're going to skip that. We all agreed on it anyway. So um, taxation, we all agreed on number two and number three, but I circled them because I had a question with Koi. Let me, for Koi, so this one is D. Number two, the Partridge Amendment. Um, what does this, uh, yeah, just whatever comment you can give me.
Yeah, yeah, you you bet, President Thomas. So it it's interesting, this Partridge Amendment has um, a fairly long history in the state. It actually came about um, all the way back in twenty fifteen. Um, and if you recall, it was uh, part of the initiative to help uh, bring online retailers and and for the um, state to begin collecting the online sales tax, right? Um, and and really what it is um, is a way to draw those businesses to to doing business here in our state um, and provide them an incentive, basically, to be able to say, hey, look, if you do a ton of business, um, we will reduce the the amount of sales tax that that you have to pay. Um, and so again, I I believe that ASBSD stance in this is given that um, the state aid is a hundred percent funded by sales tax, that anything that is done to reduce sales tax in any way, shape or form is therefore a detriment to um, this, the the school's ability to um, pay higher wages um, and and just in general uphold against inflationary increases. So um, I I think they're going to obviously want to oppose any of those uh, actions that that would in any way uh, disrupt sales tax.
Okay. All right. And so that that, yeah, that's probably the same comment for number three, the tax reduction or repeal. So and that's a proposed adoption as well.
I, in in that, in particular, President Thomas, I think is is probably aimed preemptively at the the grocery tax
Right.
um, action that they're expecting because as you notice, it's very vague and and uh,
Yeah.
uh, kind of loose language. So so I think they're preemptively trying to say, hey, look, a- anything that you do to reduce sales tax, we're going to oppose. Um, but but I believe that is is primarily what it will be aimed at.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, Deb, sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say when we have the breakfast for the legislators, that would probably be a great time for Koi to do a presentation about the class. And show them how that formula actually works because I don't think they get it. I don't think any of them get it.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that would be a good time to do that or if that's not a good time to do that, but I'd start there maybe.
Yeah, I I think that's a great time.
Okay, that's all the topics. Um, unless, oh, we can go on to other, unless anybody has any other comments on. Okay, we're on to other. Anybody have another?
Troy?
I was wondering why everybody got on so early.
Oh, boy. All right, we're on to a German then. I need a roll call on that. A motion first.
I'm moved.
Who did that?
I don't know.
Jim motioned and Michael second.
Okay.
Kate?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Thanks, everybody. Yes.
Clay reached out. He's still in a meeting. That's why he couldn't join. Jamie?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks, Shirley. Thank you.
Thank you.